Go ahead and call this meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners to order. I'll ask everyone to please stand. I'm going to offer a word of prayer and then ask everyone to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us in this room. Thank you for this great county in which we live. Thank you for this great state. Thank you for the country. But thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy by being Americans. Help us to remember all of those in the military that have fought so valently to gain and preserve and protect the freedoms that we enjoy. Now guide and direct us, help us to make decisions that are beneficial to the majority of Jackson Countyans. We ask these things in your name, dear Lord, amen.
Amen. What it is, your life, of any man, say this America, endeavor to recover, which it's changed one nation, and not God, endeavor its fault with liberty and justice.
Like to welcome everyone to this morning's meeting and remind you if there's anything that anyone wishes to speak to that's not on the agenda. We do have a portion of our agenda at the end of the agenda that you can come forward. We would ask you to try to keep your comments as brief as possible and try to keep them under three minutes if possible. With that being said, Ms. Daniels, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay, with that being said, shall entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Under section one, which is recognitions, resolutions, and presentations. We've got a board adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of a rental agreement, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is the resolution authorizing the execution of the HHRP rental agreement between the county and Endeavor Ford Incorporated. This is in relation to the Hurricane Housing Recovery Program loan in the amount of $144,000. One thing I do want to specifically ask for board approval of is to waive the requirement for a performance bond on this project. Michelle can comment, there was some back and forth in email that typically you would require one. In this case, the performance bond would cost approximately $100,000, which would pretty well negate the small, you know, relative small amount compared to the total project. So asking for board approval of this resolution as well as waiving the performance bond.
And just for clarification, the performance and payment bond basically is something that we would typically ask for. It's an insurance policy to protect us just in case the contractor could not fulfill the requirements of the contract. In this particular case, this is the one that David Melvin is providing construction management services for?
Correct.
Okay.
And typically I wouldn't recommend that, but in this case, this is a piece every last dollar we can to make this project happen for Endeavor Ford. So I just felt it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Peacock's got a question.
In the resolution, I notice in paragraph A, we're talking about affordable rental housing. And then paragraph B says, that's housing for income-eligible households. What are we talking about? Is this the cottage that we're renovating? So what, is there some guidelines that says there has to be low-income housing in there? What's the deal?
This is governed ultimately by the HHRP program, the Hurricane Housing. And so it's got to fall within their guidelines, which is where a lot of this language came from. But this will be for the next step student.
Only?
Yes.
This is specifically for the next step?
Do we need to have that in the resolution? According to this, if, David?
Yeah, so I think the HHRP says that 20% of the units have to be available for, so we got two units, so two of them have to be for low and moderate income persons. Well, I would think 100% of our students are going to be low and moderate income. So it's just a requirement in there, but we'll easily meet that with our students, they'll meet that criteria.
But I don't think we can say in the agreement, it's only for next up.
Right, but we're not opening it up. It's strictly for next step.
Correct.
Okay, Chair, entertain a motion to approve the resolution with the stipulation that the performance payments bond will not be required. We'll waive for this one specific project.
So good.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving down to section two, which is a public hearing. Item number one is board adoption of an ordinance authorizing the 1/2% school sales tax referendum, Ms. Daniels.
Mr. Benton, did you want to present anything? Okay.
Good morning Superintendent.
This is a request for the ordinance for the head of sales tax for the school system.
Ms. Daniels, you can read the ordinance by title and then you'll open up a public hearing and receive public comment.
An ordinance calling for a referendum on the levy of 1/2% sales tax in order to finance educational improvements and facilities for a term of 10 years, beginning January 1st, 2026, with the date of the voting in a referendum to be November 5th, 2024, providing for the form of the official ballot, providing for notice, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Okay, thank you very much. With that being said, we'll close out our regular session, our regular meeting, and go into a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the incorporation of this ordinance on the referendum? There is, please raise your hand. Seeing no one in the audience, Fred, is there anyone online indicating a desire to speak either for or against this ordinance?
If there's anyone online wishing to speak for or against this item, they may raise their hand via star nine on telephone or the raise hand feature on Zoom. I see no hands.
Thank you, Fred. With that being said, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into our regular session. Mr. Peacock?
I'll make a motion, we approve this request to place this on the ballot.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, Superintendent Benton, thank you. And we, I think, speaking for myself, I certainly hope that this goes, gets passed by the voters of Jackson County. It's very well warranted and used and very beneficial.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Continuing down the public hearing, item number two is board approval of modifications to a development agreement for Project Bobo, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is requesting board approval of the language modification to the development agreement for Project Bobo. No modification of the general development order is requested. And I don't know if there's anyone, I guess we need to go into public hearing this evening, is anyone?
With that being said, we'll close out our special, we'll close out our regular meeting, go into a public hearing. Ask anyone in the audience if they are here to speak either for or against the modifications to the development order for Project Bobo. Seeing no hands in the audience, I'll ask Fred if there's anyone online wanting to speak either for or against the modifications included in this development order.
As a reminder to those online, use star nine via telephone or the raise hand feature on Zoom. I see no hands.
Thank you, Fred. With that being said, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into our regular meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the, for approval to the modifications. Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion too all carries unanimously. Item number three under the public hearing is a board discussion and approval of a small-scale amendment, Ms. Daniels.
This is a request for a small-scale map amendment to change the future land use designation of 8.43 acres of one parcel from Ag 1 to Ag 2. The parcel is located on the east side of Highway 73, approximately 1/2 mile south of Hasty Pond Road in unincorporated Jackson County. The planning commission did recommend approval.
Good, thank you for that explanation. With that being said, we'll close our regular meeting, go into a public hearing. Chair again asking anyone, if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the approval of the small-scale amendment. Seeing no hands, Fred, is there anyone online indicating a desire to speak either for or against this small-scale amendment?
As a reminder, you may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Thank you, Fred. With that being said, we'll close out the public hearing and go back into our regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I do need to read the title of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 91-6, which adopted the Jackson County Conference of Plan to provide for the adoption of a certain small-scale feature land use map amendment to the Jackson County Conference of Plan, providing for severability and for repealer, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Crutchfield makes a motion to approve the small-scale amendment, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Moving down to section three of our agenda, which is community development. Item number one is a board approval and appointment of the 2024 Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, AHEC. Member, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is, well, I'm looking for the name, I'm looking over it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, the whole committee, are they listed in here? Okay.
Page 45.
Was that a motion?
So this is, yes, to appoint the whole committee, which is listed in here.
Everyone who was serving will continue to serve.
Yes, so page 45 has the whole list.
Yeah, thank you. Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney and a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions, comments, concerns, hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Moving down the agenda, item number two is board approval of a ship program assistance agreement with ARPC, Ms. Daniels.
Board approval of the ship program administration agreement with ARPC. The current agreement ends July 13th, 2024. The new agreement will be for three years, effective July 14th, 2024, through July 13th, 2027.
Okay, you've heard the request?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number three, which is board review of a variance to the Jackson County Code of Ordinances, section 42-455 for N 7, Ms. Daniels.
On May 7th, 2024, staff received a request from Donald and Polly Jenkins for approval of a variance to Jackson County Code of Ordinances, section 42-4557, to allow a manufactured home to be placed on Lot 9, Block 105, Unit 4, 3221 Yvette Drive, within the Compass Lake and the Hills subdivision. On June 3rd, 2024, the planning commission recommended approval of a variance.
Okay, you've heard the explanation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions?
You want to allow public comment?
Yeah, you can leave open for comments.
Is this? So do we, on a variance request?
You normally do.
Okay, well, before we, before we vote on that motion in a second, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of this variance? If you would, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, please, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Donald Jenkins, I'm the one put in for the request.
Okay.
I'm sorry y'all happened to keep hearing all these requests coming into the county. Hopefully on the 18th, we can resolve that problem. If your folks here in Jackson County, a whole lot of things, you can do away with them.
Okay, appreciate your comment, thanks, sir. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of the variance? Seeing none, no hands in the audience, still we've got a motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Commissioner McKinney, I believe, is that correct? With that being said, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries 41 with Commissioner Branch noting no. Item number four is a board review of a various Jackson County Code of Ordinance, section 42-68, parant A, parant C, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this requires a 50-foot step back to the wetlands. But after doing some research and looking at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Current Wetlands Inventory Map, it shows Mr. Whitehead's property is not in a wetlands area. So that is also requesting not only to approve this request, but that the BOCC update the county wetlands map and the national wetlands inventory map, so that we would utilize that instead of the current maps we look at. And the planning commission also recommended approval.
Got it, question, comment?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request with the addition that they monitor this national wildlife, fishery and wildlife map, and it, over time, if it changes, automatically adjust accordingly.
You said wildlife.
Fish and wildlife.
Oh, the fish and wildlife.
Their map.
Their map.
Don't come back to, I mean, I don't want a handicap planning. If something changes, you know, it's a minor change, take care of it.
Yeah, okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of this variance? If you don't mind, come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Here, Whitehead.
Good morning.
Good morning. Now, I was wanting to, um, when to get the variance for this, this property.
By the way.
Whatever y'all can do is, it'd be much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just get clarification on Mr. Peacock's?
Motion.
About the automatic update to your maps? Do we want to put that in the code? That our map is always going to be aligned?
Mirror theirs.
To that map?
We don't have the ability to go out and do it. And obviously, the map that we were using was out of date and was creating some problems, it looks like.
Isn't there, aren't there two maps that we refer to?
Well, not for wetlands, but the wetlands map is part of our comprehensive plan. So any update to that map would require a major comprehensive plan amendment. So it can't be automatic, like you're saying. But we could update it each round that we're updating our comprehensive plan.
And how often do you update it?
Every 10 years.
Every what?
Every seven years.
We review it on the seventh year, but.
But what happens if Mr. Whitehead gets caught six months after we've gone into a cycle?
Well.
What I don't want to see is us have to sit here seven years or someone sit here seven years waiting to change it. Let's make the adjustments as we go along.
I understand.
Who in the, who designates wetlands in the comp plan?
Right now, our, our information is based on what was first approved back in 1991.
Yeah, fish and wildlife.
But what we're, what we're requesting is the National Wetlands Inventory, which is an updated map over that one.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Follow that, but if there's, their map changes, I don't think we need to wait seven years to try to change ours.
I understand what you're saying, that that, just letting you know, that would require a major comprehensive plan amendment.
So do you?
So is that what we want to put in our code, though, that, to direct the staff that when they receive an update to the map, that they'll bring a comp plan amendment before the board without having?
Yes.
And at that point in time, the board would then need to vote whether to go forward with that major comp plan amendment?
Yeah.
Or whether to attack it a different way?
Okay.
That make sense?
I just don't want staff trying to deal with an obsolete map.
Right. Okay, then your motion stands as stated with the clarifications. Okay. All right, with that being said, moving down the agenda to item number five, which is board clarification of the Compass Lake and the Hills ordinance, Ms. Daniels.
On May 28th, you all directed staff to set a public hearing regarding repealing the prohibition on mobile and manufactured homes within Compass Lake and the Hills subdivision. So we just wanted clarification, did the board, was the board wanting to repeal the entire ordinance that specific, the Compass Lake and the Hills, which addresses things like setbacks, size of the home, et cetera? Or do you just want to deal with the mobile homes at this time?
I, I looked at it a little bit and, and I met with Amber yesterday and got some, a little bit of input from her as well. And if, I'm afraid if we repeal the entire ordinance, that would mean that that entire area would fall underneath R1 regulations that are currently in place. Is that correct, Amber? And there may be some repercussions of that, that we don't necessarily want to allow. So I think if we just modify the ordinance to allow pre-manufactured homes and mobile homes, but place a stipulation on them that they can't be any, I mean, five years is what we talked about yesterday, so that we're not allowing, you know, old mobile homes that don't comply with the current regulations to come in. And to me, that would kind of limit the type of.
Which, that is part of what we want clarification on as well. So that's not currently what's advertised for next week. The only thing that's advertised is to repeal the prohibition of mobile homes. But there's a couple different ways we can handle, whatever you all decide. If it's something different than what's advertised, is we can proceed with the public hearing and repeal it, just as it is. Or you could proceed and then do, you know, a future public hearing to get some of these other things in. But I just wanted to make sure y'all were clear what we advertise is just to repeal the mobile home prohibition.
So that we should leave the ordinance basically in place, but modify the ordinance to not allow, I mean, to allow mobile homes and bring back.
Right, that's what we're currently advertising.
Michelle, are we opening ourselves up to some problems? Because my understanding, that property down there should be just like the property in two ways. We should fall under the comprehensive land development plan and that's it. So I'm afraid that if, would we be subject to housing discrimination? I mean, they can sue us for the time of day.
Right. I don't think we're opening ourselves up for any additional liability that doesn't already exist. I don't think there's any additional risk with this. I had asked for a clarification because the existing land use regulations, the other land use regulations, not, not specific to the mobile home provision, would not allow for a single-wide mobile home. And I don't know if that was something that the board had considered at the time that they, that you all.
Did you say that again?
So the, the rest of 42-455, those provisions would not permit a single-wide, the home has to be wider than 22 feet.
And, and 1,000 square feet and meet the setback requirements as well. And then there's also limitations on the number of, a number of dwellings that can go on a particular piece of land. And Compass Lake and the Hills is, you know, quite a bit different than a lot of other parts of the world, Jackson County, in that there's so many small lots in there.
But if we, if the Attorney General comes back and says that we have the authority to vacate the plat, then it'll open it up for people to go in and buy tracts of those things and set up their own subdivisions.
I don't think that would have any, any impact on this.
Well.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't. And this was a distinction that it took me a little while to lay out for, when I was drafting the Attorney General opinion, is that those land use regulations came in after the plat, years after the plat. Those land use regulations came in with the establishment of the taxing unit. And they are attached to the taxing unit and the boundaries of the taxing unit, not, not necessarily the plat. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that'd clear the mud.
Yeah.
But my motion was to repeal the allowing, not allowing manufactured and mobile homes or in Compass Lake and the Hills. That was what I was.
So, so what you've been hearing.
The other portion, like Ms. Daniels said, if we want to come back and visit the other portion later, that's fine. But my motion was to strike everything that pertains to those manufactured homes and modular homes and mobile homes in Compass Lake and the Hills. That's what I made the motion for. So I, what I would like to add to, is strike all of that information from the ordinance, but also go back and the comp plan, anything else, and rules and regulations we have, strike it there also. Because if things come in piecemeal, I'm seeing things, well, we took it out of here, but we didn't take it out over here. Let's clean it all up at one fell swoop.
I'm not really following what you're saying.
Take it out of the ordinance.
So, but your, your motion spoke only to the ordinance.
That's correct. Now I'm going to, I'll make another one.
Wait now, before you do that. Make sure what we're doing. So, so Michelle has requested clarification on what your motion was last time. And what I'm hearing you say is that you were basically just wanted to leave the ordinance in place, but eliminate the prohibition of pre-manufactured housing and mobile homes. Is that what your intent was?
My intent was, yes, to remove that from the ordinance.
Which is what's advertised.
And what, what they're saying, what Ms. Daniels is saying, there are other things in there that we need to address, and you're bringing up the 1,000 square feet.
Well, that stays in there.
Yes, I wanted to make sure that next week, there was no misunderstanding of what's, what can be addressed next week based on the advertisement, which is just what his motion was.
That's, that was my motion, but I also want to make sure that we take it out of everything.
There is no other reference to Compass Lake in the comp plan.
But we're setting, we're, I think we're asking for trouble when we keep these regulations pertaining to what they can and can't do down there. They, they can't have a house, you know, under 1,000 feet, they can't, you know, which is in five years. That's what a homeowners association is for.
There, there is a homeowners association.
No, there's a property owners association, they're not the same.
Well, right now, what it.
There's a property owners association down there, but they're not a homeowners association as defined by statute. So they don't have the authority to put those regulations in place as, as that entity exists today.
I think, I think if you leave 1,000 square foot in there, you're going to pretty much put mobile home to double wide or manufactured home to double wide, not single wide, where somebody go down and buy a lot and they go find a trailer over here that's, somebody wanting to sell for $500 or whatever, move it down there.
Just to keep that from there.
You know, most of you, double wide trailers, they're going to have to take apart and move it if they find a UG, they'll get it back, probably going to be pretty good home, you know? And if they don't, they go buy a new, brand new, you know, double wide. They, they ain't restricted to, they gotta be restricted to 1,000 feet or more.
At this point in time, I'm in favor of leaving your motion in place with the clarification that we're eliminating the prohibition of mobile homes and pre-manufactured housing, but all of the remaining regulations that are in there would stay for right now. And that's the way, right now, that is the way it's advertised.
That's right.
So at this point in time, that doesn't require a motion. So the only thing, if we were changing course, that would be the only thing that would require a motion.
I would like to say that, that I am against repealing the ordinance. However, if it gets repealed, I think there should be some restrictions on what can be put down there. We've got quite a few people that bought property down there just for that reason. And at least I think we need to give them some safeguard against future use as far as restrictions of what can be put down there and what can't be put down there.
Well, there are obviously some restrictions that the chairman wants to leave in place. And I suspect we'll be revisiting this later.
We could, right? But I like.
As far as I'm concerned, no different than anywhere else, Jackson County, rural Jackson County, unincorporated.
It is because, again, you've got a tremendous number of very small lots. It's, the density down there is a lot different because of the way it's been set up than, than a lot of other parts of rural Jackson County. So I would not agree with that. I would say it is a little different. But, you know, to me, this is, this is an attainable housing issue. And so, anyway, with that being said, unless there's a motion to change course, I think we just proceed with it as advertised and.
Okay.
We're forward.
Okay, is there, there is no restrictions on this, is that what you're saying? What we're doing?
What we're doing is removing, you cannot, we're the part prohibiting. What we're doing is removing, you cannot, we're, the part prohibiting manufactured and mobile homes on the east side of two thirty-one is going away. But you will still have to have a thousand square feet and.
Twenty-four foot wide.
And the setbacks, the two or three thing then.
And there's also, Ms. Barnes, there's also some uh prohibition against certain number of dwellings too. So I know that you can't come in and put three or four houses on one lot.
That's a big compromise.
That's actually in that ordinance, isn't it? Okay.
But nothing's in there about the uh age of the structure that's been.
Not, not now. So we may have to revisit that at some point in time.
I think if you leave it a thousand square foot where they had to get a mobile home, mostly double wide, it's for
Yep.
these homes, you know, I I would think uh.
To me, that's kind of a good compromise is we're, we're, you know, we're kind of allowing uh, you know, pre manufactured mobile homes, but they still need to meet a certain set of criteria.
Yeah, yeah, we need to leave those, some of those restrictions in there because we've got code enforcement on the board for magistrate now. So we have some kind of control for us, you know, what's going in there and and how the appearance aesthetics look like.
Okay, consensus is just move forward as as it's currently advertised. All right, with that being said, that concludes uh section three, community development, which moves the assembly reports and requests. Uh, I trust everyone's had a chance to look at the items contained in the consent agenda. Unless there's any questions.
A motion we approve the request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch to approve the consent agenda items. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number two on the reports and requests is board approval of Adobe software license renewal, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, to renew uh licensing for one year and add nine additional licenses. For the removal of licensing for unused Adobe apps, the net cost will be a decrease of two hundred and sixteen dollars and fifteen cents.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner Penny, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number three, board approval to utilize tourist development committee funds for uh uh tourist development council funds for the Spring Creek cleanup, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is uh to request utilize TDC reserve funds to cover the cleanup and rebuild of Spring Creek. During May meeting, the TDC board approved the usage of funds not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the project.
And this is primarily to uh remove Rhett uh the material that's actually in the creek. Uh, also, uh, we, we had talked about trying to clean up that bank as a little bit as well to try to get that back into a better shape as well. Yeah.
So you're gonna go down the creek, pulling trees out, is that what you're?
Okay, so pretty easy. Um, so due to the nature of the storm and the timeframe, we will be removing any stumps, we can't be disturbing the bank, but we will be able to cut and remove the trunk and the actual tree. So um there won't be any bank disturbance, sedimentation, anything like that. Um, so this is just to remove the the tree section that.
That are laying over in the creek.
Which are several. Um, so I've been keeping in touch with the deputy detail that works on the weekend as to see, because they're down now and it's a, it's an obstruction. Um, so we're not seeing any impeding of flows, but it is a hurdle that you know, tubers and people have to get around. So we want to try to get them out of the way as quick as possible.
When would you start working on it?
So I reached out to the contractor that did the work in um Bay County, I forget now, it's about George possibly, that was working on the water management contract, they're supposed to be coming up and um taking a look at it. So really waiting on them at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Mr. Crutchfield, any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number four, moving down the agenda, is board approval of Fillmore Drive change order. This is final pay request and closeout documents, Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, we received, the county received an NRCS grant for Fillmore Drive box culvert repairs. Uh, the project was awarded to Anderson Columbia. A change order is also attached to this to decrease the contract amount by thirty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And uh brings the final contract amount to three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
We're very well pleased with the work down there. It turned out real well. Uh, I had a chance to ask Rhett about the crack repair that was done actually at the bottom side, well, actually in several areas in the culvert. Rhett, you feel pretty comfortable with that? And I see jeans back there in the back. Uh, we felt real comfortable with the work that was done on the inside.
Um, that NRCS is doing their site inspection today, so we should be all set.
Yeah, yeah, the work from the road looks good and we've got both lanes up and back up now.
I make a motion to approve the request.
Got a motion from Mr. Peacock, second from Mr. Branch, any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number five is uh a board approval to change the funding source uh for the correctional facility roof and rooftop replacement, HVAC replacement.
Yeah, so there's a lot of history included in your packet, but as most of you know, we have been uh working towards replacing the correctional roof since the storm uh through a grant. Um, when all is said and done, we are considerably short with what the grant uh will provide for the roof when bids came back in, as well as uh HVAC replacement. And so um while we are going to work with the contractor to get this number hopefully much lower than what we have in your packet, um we are asking for the board to approve uh one point four million dollars roughly to be uh dedicated from the admin building fund. Uh, because this is a critical project to get um the roof replaced and we don't want to lose the grant funds that we currently have.
And um what would that take the administration funding?
I think it's around three million in it, so about half of it.
They'll leave three, you said?
No, no, there's three in it. It would be half of it.
Okay.
My only concern, and I've already voiced this to Will Anne, was the, that, you know, the, the type of roof system is uh that was specified, not, and I've not seen the bid documents, but I'm, I'm a little concerned um that it uh, that may be part of what's causing uh leading to some higher prices. But I think that once we get a contractor on board, uh we can have those conversations. And there may be some options that we can consider for a different type of roof, but without getting into those conversations, it's hard to know.
Do we need to have, we, before you get a contractor, don't you need to have something put it out? Because this guy may do one type and the next one may do another. He may not know the type you're referring to. I know this thing has been bouncing around.
Well, the contractor has been talked with, correct, that, and he, he, he knows that we're going to be looking at what our options are. And I think he is agreeable to that. Um, but this project was very complicated because of the grant funding and there's a lot of moving parts. So to go back as a drawing board is not really ideal with timelines for grants and things like that either.
It's, it's taken a long time to even get to this point.
I mean, we've been discussing this for weeks, trying to see what is the best path forward. And this is what, after speaking with the grant manager at Florida Commerce and all the factors considered, uh, we thought this is the best path.
Didn't we get some money from FEMA to do this?
Not FEMA, we got a grant after the storm.
I thought we got FEMA money to to fix the roof.
So what, how much was the grant?
Or insurance?
We got FEMA money to fix a number of roofs, but not.
We have.
I, it was part of the deal, right?
We had one point two million dollars in a grant that is a result of Hurricane Michael. That's what we have for a grant, but the bid came in at two point, two point six.
But we never got money out of FEMA.
No, but this is federal funding. So I mean, it's, it came as a result of Michael, but it didn't come from FEMA. It came from um the CDBG mitigation DR something.
And this project also involves the replacement of all of, all of the rooftop units.
Yes.
The total replacement, which those units are.
Which that's, that's another factor. So all of these factors that we've been weighing is there's a couple of units that will have to have at least twenty thousand dollars worth of repairs before winter. If we don't proceed with this, well, twenty thousand is nothing in the grand scheme of this money, but it's still twenty thousand dollars. So that, those are all the things we kind of laid out and said, what's our best path? And we feel like this is it.
How long do they think it would take to do all of it?
I was questioning that myself. Um, the contractor and the architect's deal contract was a sixty to ninety day contract.
Is there, there's not any long lead times on any of the rooftop units? They're all pretty much fairly.
That's the same stuff. So the, the roofing contractor is subbing out their conditioner work and I mean, they're, they're sitting on go. They're thinking this is gonna be a really quick turnaround.
How much of this is HVAC?
Well, about half of it, isn't it?
I think about half was.
Hundreds, over eight hundred thousand.
What, what's the age? Is that all the units?
Are, is all of them the same age, old units, or have been some replaced in between?
There's a mix. Some of them are pretty old, some of them fairly new, but crazy enough, it's the newer ones we're having problems with, so. But that's every unit, every rooftop unit will be completely replaced.
Why wouldn't we replace the fairly new?
For those who want to give a station.
Cheap made, huh?
Yeah, the two, um, the two of question, so part of the the twenty thousand that um Will Anne was speaking of is the state requires us to provide heat during winter. Um, so that's what the little law we have, oddly enough, we forward it, doesn't require air conditioner, but we do have to have heat. So the heating elements are what are giving us issues. So like she was saying, regardless, we have to make those repairs prior to winter. But if we can execute this entire project, we can have the whole thing done for.
Or the gas are electric, all electric.
Um, I believe they're gas.
What's the problem with a gas on the top of the roof, like a package unit, that's what they call it? A life of heating chamber about ten years. I mean, they go a little longer than that, but they cause a lot of problem. The reason why is because you burn, you know, the moisture on the outside on a morning, it just as much moisture inside.
Yeah.
And it rusts. So you can burn trash in a barrel, how long that barrel gonna last? Which that heat chamber is a little better metal, but after a while, it takes its toll and needs a hole through the heating chamber.
Right.
So really, uh, uh, all, a heat pump would be better because you wouldn't have as much problem with a heating system. You know, but I mean, the moisture don't affect it as bad as the, the gas, gas. But what happened when it heats that inside of that metal, then that attracts moisture. And on a foggy day, it just as much moisture inside that unit because it's not totally sealed as it is on the outside.
But it's real, it's it's real problematic to, especially in a jail like this, to go to convert from a package unit, you know, where the ductwork is coming straight out of the unit to try to, to a split system where you gotta find a place.
Well, you, you, you can, uh, you can get a package unit and a heat pump all gas.
Right.
The difference between gas and a gas lot warmer heat, a lot hotter heat, fact. And and the heat uh is slow, but I'm sure they leave them on like a thermostat set. So usually that does a pretty good job. You'll have a long, longer life. That's probably the air conditioner is in okay shape, the heating part, what the problem is. Now, split unit, go back to what he said, if you had a split unit, well, inside a house with a gas unit, it's gonna stay dry. It'll last thirty, forty years inside. Outside, you know, twenty years are gonna be, I mean, fifteen probably tops you gonna get out of a package unit. So you're gonna be doing this again in fifteen, twenty years. You know, I was in the propane business now and I know, you know, and I recommended whatever person wanted. You know, my business was selling gas and I'd rather sell you a gas unit, but if it's a package unit, I did recommend against that because of that reason. You know, you're gonna be spending money again pretty soon. So you're gonna have air conditioner, but no heat. So we gotta change both units. But you can get a package unit and heat pump or all electric or whatever. They have heat strips on them. If the heat pump go bad, you can flip it over to emergency and still have heat. And the, the moisture don't affect it as bad.
Are you recommending that we look at?
Heat pump. That what I do, I get a problem with heat pump. I think that'd be a longer life.
Would have to instead of having part of the unit up on the roof?
No, all of it be on the roof. Be just the same thing. It looks the same. If you walked everywhere, you wouldn't know the difference. You didn't know, know it was gas or not.
You're just saying change, from gas to heat pump.
Yeah, yeah. So package heat pump or package gas.
I think that we looked at that as an option once we got a contractor.
You have a lot longer life.
But you're talking about going from gas to electric.
Yeah.
And and the only.
The difference, that gonna be, you know, that, that'll be changed. Because let the, let, hey, actually, it don't take no more power or no more bigger wire, the, the heat strip is what, gonna take a bigger wire.
And then if you ha- get into a situation, do you have room in the panels?
Yeah, yeah.
It, it can, it can be looked at, but.
If they didn't put heat strips, then you wouldn't have to change wiring, but I wouldn't recommend it would not have heat strip.
Because you're gonna have those few days and you need all emergency.
Well, it's designed there. If you walked in there and had the thermostat turn it off this morning, you weren't left home. You come in and like in one fall of the week, you're, it can be warm, you go out and it'd be cold when you come in, your house is cold. You turn that thermostat on, say seventy degrees, and it's forty in the house, that heat strip gonna come on, it's gonna build that heat up faster. Once it gets to then ten degrees of that room temperature, it changes to heat pump, the heat pump supposed to maintain it. As long as you leave that thermostat on and you keep the house con- comfortable all day, you know, it's gonna, the heat strip will come on if the heat pump can handle it. If the heat pump, it gets so cold outside where the heat pump losing ground, heat strips come on heavy that. So I mean, I wouldn't recommend a heat pump tall without heat strip. Because there again, you know, you're gonna have to run a bigger electrical wire to take care of that heat strip.
And Rhett, uh, the, you did clarify that this roof system does come with a thirty-year warranty. And it's not the fifty-year that we originally thought that it might have come with, which uh.
That is part for labor and policy. Or?
No.
Yeah, probably.
This is on the roofing.
Uh, yeah, I want to say, uh, on, on a year, thirty years. If they gonna watch it, the heat chamber for thirty years?
No.
No.
Those are probably five-year, five-year, ten-year.
I find out what warranty be on, yeah, lady, I, I take pride on heat pumps. I think it would be money saved or it's gonna make that unit last a lot longer. You know, it's, I know it hurt the gas company, natural gas part are probably on it. Hurt them, but I mean, you know, uh, we need to try, try to save money if we can. And that, that'd be one way you can save down the road.
Will Anne, the, the, um, the motion that we need is to approve the, the funding source.
Yes.
The administration dollars as a funding source to make up the difference.
That's right.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got chairman, yeah, a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Moving down the agenda, get to where we are. Item number seven, board approval of salary increase for jail employees, Ms. Daniels.
Well, would you skip?
One, one above that one. This is actually a ward, the correctional facility roof to acne roofing and sheet metal.
Okay, you've heard the explanation. This is to award the contract to Acme Roofing and Sheet Metal.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Now, item number seven is board approval of the salary increase for jail, jail employees, Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, this is um increases in line with the state funded increases through the FDLE grant for sworn correctional staff. Uh, so as a reminder to the board, last year, we did not get the thirty percent additional funding that other law enforcement agencies uh received, including our local law enforcement. Um, so this is to bring, because we are getting it effective July one. Um, so what we did last year is we gave the correctional officers the sixteen fifty that everyone else got. So this brings them up to what they would have received if they had uh received the thirty percent. So we took the difference of the sixteen fifty in the total, and I believe it's seventeen hundred dollars approximately. And then we also have an additional um consideration for the board in light of the fact that we will have a pretty significant savings to our budget once we put all of this into the FDLE grant. Um, our non sworn staff in the facility have not received anything uh in addition to what other county staff have received. And the thought process is they are um just as much locked in the jail with um it, with the inmates as the sworn staff are. And so we'd like the board to consider two thousand eighty dollars, that's a dollar per hour raise for the non sworn staff. And I believe there's seven of those, or maybe nine.
These are cooks.
Um, there's some kitchen staff, the admin staff in the office, our maintenance personnel, um. and that should, no, we're not talking about the nurses because they received a separate increase earlier this year. Um, so it's kitchen, admin staff, and maintenance.
Seven total.
I think it's seven, seven.
Mr. Biggott.
So is there funds left in the fine and forfeiture to take care of this?
Yeah.
And overall, this a, something we should be doing in July in budget?
Well, this money, this, this additional money will be coming to you July one, um, and you will actually, a portion of the money you budgeted for the correctional officers will be coming back to your budget because now it's coming out of this grant.
We make it for that, will automatically go every year? Has that been the last two, three years?
Yes.
And overall, about, you're talking about eighteen thousand roughly for?
For the seven, for the seven, but you will be seeing, I don't remember how much more of a savings because the rest of this funding, funding will be coming from the F D L E grant.
I make a motion to approve the request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Pickoff, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments here, none. All this in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just, uh, make a comment that I just really wanted to say about the, um, jail staff, how much I appreciate how patient they have been. Uh, if there has been any complaining or, I have not heard a word, I don't believe there has. I think they were genuinely happy with the sixteen fifty, but I think that the additional funds is well deserved. And I just wanted to say publicly how much I appreciate their patience.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, item number eight, board approval of the billing agreement for cloud services for utilities. Ms. Daniels.
Yes, so this is an agreement for cloud services for utility billing. Uh, they offer a monthly rate of three hundred and sixty-four dollars or an annual rate of four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight. There's no upfront fee. And, um, this is a cybersecurity measure essentially, but this will eliminate the need for a secondary server that our I T department must maintain. And, uh, it's just an additional layer of concern.
I got some questions.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Pickoff.
Um, so what happens if there's a cyber breach?
Fred, Fred, you can probably jump in on this, um, from the security aspect.
Are referring to our current system or remote system?
With this system that we're, y'all got the forest.
Cloud-based system.
It would be handled by that company.
And it would be an improvement overall security-wise, correct?
Correct.
How is it an improvement, Fred?
Without going into too much detail, we currently host it at a on-site at one of our facilities. And it's, uh, essentially having to host it on-site and, uh, open ports on firewalls and such to, to allow outside access to that internal server.
Rhett, does this change anything with billing and everything?
Not for the operations of it, but it will, so right now what we're having to do is remote in from the outside office to a server at another location. And it's, uh, quite cumbersome. So this will actually allow improved services to our customers when they call in. Want to check their usage, check their bill, pay a bill, whatever. It'll allow more access for various employees to, you know, log into the system and get whatever information they need.
Uh, you said three hundred and sixty-four a month, but yet on page one forty-one, it says seventy-five dollars per month.
Seventy-five is what we're currently paying for their service. So it'll be, uh, three sixty-four adds in the, uh, cloud-based service. So we're, I mean, C U S I, that's, we've been using for years. And we currently have to pay for that service, but it's increasing, um, due to their hosting.
Uh, since they're on their letterhead and everything, it says seventy-five per month.
This, this not, this is three sixty-four.
On page one forty-one. Where we gonna get the money for them?
Fred, can you speak to, on page one forty-one, it says seventy-five dollars per month, per one hundred gigabytes. Is that because we need more than that?
Give me a minute, pull that up.
Don't spend any more than we have to.
Fred's looking for that. Where, where will these dollars come from, Will Anne?
From utilities.
From utility, I would.
We got it.
Yeah.
I don't have your pack. Everything I have says three sixty-four.
Well.
Well, the only place I got three sixty-four is in what you got.
So three sixty-four, no, you have three sixty-four right here is in their actual quote. The seventy-five is based on one hundred gigabytes of data. So although it does not say this, and we'll let Fred verify, I'm assuming that we need seventy-five times however many gigabytes of data.
We, we have under the one hundred gig threshold of data in our current system.
Say that again, Fred.
That is for the, it seems to be that's for their managed backup service, um, and it's seventy-five per month, per hundred gigs of data, and we're under one hundred gigs of data.
Why are we paying three sixty-four?
Because we're going to the cloud base, which puts more data on there.
Oh, you're gonna add data.
Well, yeah, they're opening the entire system versus our.
Right. Okay, Chairman, have a motion.
Deal with it.
Sir.
If we have any problems, we can, they deal with it.
Absolutely. And that, you know, we continue training, um, and that's one of the issues. When we have to do an update or make any adjustments, that's, we have to reach out to them and they have to remotely log into our server, and that's where some of the concerns are.
This should also result in a savings of time as well.
Oh.
Lot, lot of, man hours, or woman hours, uh, personnel hours, as we say, by it being a less cumbersome type system. Chairman, have a motion to approve it. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any question, any other questions? Comments here, none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, that same, uh, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is, uh, board approval of the Dillmore Road change order. Ms. Daniels.
It's, uh, board approval of change order number two for project cap. This will consist of additional paving toward the R V park path of project site.
This is actually extending the paving to the, uh, R V park a little bit further to the west.
Correct.
Got a motion from Mr. Crutchfield, second from Commissioner McKinney.
I got a question. Where's the money coming from?
Question from Mr. Pickoff, go ahead.
Where's the money coming from?
Grant, the grant.
All the grants gonna pay for it.
It's under review with Commerce right now, but this would essentially, uh, use the entirety of the budget, so contingency, um.
Okay.
They're, they're just approving the change of the, where those funds are gonna be used. The grant funds are there already.
Correct.
Right.
Just adding in the extended payment.
Right.
Because essentially it's like.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, I think. Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Here, none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number ten is, uh, board approval of milling projects. Ms. Daniels.
Well, yes, I'm gonna let Rhett read this item.
Yeah, so, um, we had an opportunity a few months ago to work with Anderson Columbia on getting some milling from some of their jobs. A couple of the commissioners had asked to purchase the material and put on roads using bond funding, so we've listed it in here. We didn't put the extent of the road because that's gonna fluctuate depending on the amount of material that's actually available. We do have Gene Strickland here that could possibly speak on that or answer any questions. Um, but this is to get the board to allow up to forty-five hundred loads for these roads provided, um, or, you know, as much material as is available.
So, um, and you say, uh, the forty-five hundred loads is what we think, based on Mr. Strickland's, uh, calculations.
No, sir.
Exactly.
Forty-five hundred loads is the request of commissioners about providing the road list and the extent of road. So that's how much we need. But that's not what's gonna be available. So this will be a, a fluid list. Some roads may have to come completely off, some extents reduced. Um, but this was, you know, if there's unlimited amounts of milling, we need forty-five hundred loads.
Right.
But in reality, we're probably gonna be looking, I believe, a little closer to two thousand.
Yeah, come on, Paul, Jane. Look for the records, state your name, please. Good morning.
Gene Strickland. Good morning. And, uh, the management company. Now, we just have, we're gonna, right now, we've got two roads. Well, we've got a surplus that we took off I ten, so we're not needing this material in the recycling process that we usually use it for. And instead of putting it out for, you know, just for the public, we're gonna make it, I talked to Rhett and him about making it available to y'all if you wanted it to reduce price. Picked up under the milling machine, which helps us with trucking, therefore allowing the price to come down some. Right now, we've got Highway ninety from Marion to, uh, Cottondale and seventy-one from Marion to Greenwood that are gonna be done in the next few months. I can't give you exact date and time, but, uh, those two jobs together are about twelve hundred loads. But I've got probably a hundred or two that we've kind of committed to, to private at, at market price. So I'm gonna fulfill those commitments. So it'll be somewhere right now, a thousand tons, forty-five hundred tons is a lot. The D O T has a lot of work coming up over the next few years, so I don't know what the timing on all that is as far as any availability that we may have, we may not. We may be able to give you a good deal, we may not. Right now, we're trying to make it available at a good price. So that, that's what we have.
Got it.
So we would be picking it up on the road.
On the road, yes.
And then what Rhett and I talked about, and I don't know if this is still the plan, it's gonna be difficult to basically pick it up from the milling machine and, and carry it and spread it to the road. So we're talking about staging it at the, uh, at the ag center still, basically, and then being able to distribute it from there, which is not ideal, but still works better as far as trying to figure out where it's gonna go. Uh, I would think that all four of the commissioners would, based on the fact that we've got, you know, uh, we've got more of a need than we have material available that somehow or another, uh, that, that we'll try to distribute that evenly among the four commissioners or five commissioners, whoever has needs for it, so that, uh, each district gets basically an equal share of that material. Is that kind of the plan?
Yes.
And I, I would think that's a fair way of, of handling it.
So where does the money come from?
It'll be a mix of, uh, bond and some discretionary, depending on which district we're in.
Like, for, for my district, it would be all bond money.
Right, as well, all bonds.
I think, oh, I got a question. I noticed on here, you know, I, I wasn't included in this. Can you explain why?
Uh, yes, sir, sorry. Um, the, uh, chip seal litigation pro- project, chip seal bond project that's currently in litigation, until we can determine the resolution of that, we don't know how much funds you're gonna have available. So we may still be on the hook for, uh, good portion of your bond funds from that project.
Okay, uh, wh- what is the status? I think I'm, I talked to Sarah one time about it and understand that bond money may go away if you don't use it by a certain time.
Yes, so.
Uh, what happens to that money after time runs out?
If yours is still in litigation, then we're good because we got documentation of, as to why, um, so this would be something we had to provide to the bond company.
Would chip seal only is one of the problem in my area?
Yes.
Another question I wanna ask you too is, I know like down on Mill Road, and I always thought for a district met, you know, a road separated to different districts, then half that road of one district, half the other, right? Not true?
Uh, we don't really look at it that way.
Uh, you know, I just, I don't, uh, uh, a whole road chart for one district, pretty much, I reckon that's what they're saying. They're like, down on Mill Road, everywhere, that's the problem.
We can't separate it in half. We can only do it linearly. So we can't say, you got ten foot of this road and ten foot of that road. It'll be, it's easier to do it.
Well, I ain't talking about even that. I mean, it don't have to be a hundred percent one way or the other, but but if you, if you got a road there and, and one district line on the east side is, uh, one district pers- uh, uh, for example, District Four on Mill Road on the east side, the people voting is on District Four. On the west is District Two.
Okay.
All right, then is all that road charged to District Two? Would that be the case really? If you charging me, the, the lawsuit is against my road. It'd be all my road, not half and half.
So for that one, the reason is because the previous commissioner, you know, uh, that's, that was the project he wanted to do under his, uh, funds. But when we're doing day-to-day work, I'd have to ask the office how that's delegated out.
I just know, you know, like if you go, it separates like that, even like Peanut Road, we got on the east side is his, west side mine. And, you know, if something had to be done on that road, we could try to halfway share the cost somewhat, you know, because instead of one district taking the whole cost. That's just the way I look at it. I don't know if that's the way it is.
Yeah, I can find out, let you know.
Yeah. So anyway, that's what I, that's what I had, I wanted to.
There, there probably would be some past policy that would address that.
I, I, there's no, I always
Yeah.
Thought it was, uh, shared roads if you're district one side, one the other, instead of all one district. You know, but it could be, I don't know. Thing like that's the case now. You know, for me, on the bond on mine, I can't use any of the money right now on the bond. I ain't trying to take anything away from him.
Sure.
But, you know, he can, you know.
Okay. Well, getting back to the distribution of the milled asphalt, how, how will that be handled specifically? Like, again, we, I, I think I'm hearing consensus from the board that whatever milled asphalt is available, that it be equally distributed among, I guess, the four districts until your district, you know, until that chip seal litigation gets resolved.
I think that's right.
And then just, uh, you know, basically each commissioner get with, uh, Mr. Daniels and, and figure out, you know, obviously not each one of the, every one of these roads in their entirety will be able to have milled asphalt placed on the entire roadway. So there probably is gonna need to be some priority made, uh, based on, you know, based on each commissioner.
Figure out the loads.
Yeah.
And one, one district, if it's all in one pile, that's gonna be hard. That's some way you're gonna be able to figure.
Yeah, well, once it gets out filed and we know the total quantity, we'll be able to divide out from there.
Very good. So, so this doesn't really take, do, do we need to approve this list? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Right, okay. Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner McKinney to approve this list that's included in the packet. Uh, any other questions? Comments here, none. All this in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Well, thank you, Mr. Strickland, for looking out for us and trying to get the county the best they possibly could give us, and I appreciate that, Mr. Strickland. Thanks, Senator.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll echo Commissioner McKinney's comments. We appreciate, uh, Anderson Columbia working with us and, and we've got a good relationship with A C. And, uh, we appreciate the work that, uh, you guys do in the county chain, you know that. Uh, item number eleven, board approval of rules and procedure for board meetings. Ms. Daniels.
Look, this is, uh, something the board adopted several years ago and, um, in looking through the documents, Bridget, um, noticed that we have changed some things, like we changed the format of our agenda. Um, just different things that we wanted to make sure are up to date based on what you're actually doing. Um, so that's all it is.
So really, we're just basically changing the rules to mimic what we're, how we're actually procedurally operating.
Yes, the rules were already here, but some of these things that, um, you see changed or added are to reflect what's happening in reality. Just for whatever reason, things change over time, and we make sure the rules reflect that.
Got one question. Looking on page one fifty-five, item five, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. A speaker may only speak once during the specific public comment period for that agenda item. I would like to add, uh, unless requested by commissioner.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, we've had a number of occurrences where, uh, persons have.
Cause I mean, somebody comes up and speaks, well, like Gene came up, but we, we, we may wanna call him back up. And, but if Gene gets up here and he speaks, we may, uh, ask questions, or he'll be there longer than three. And, but if Gene gets up here and he speaks, we may, uh, ask questions, or he'll be there longer than three minutes.
I, I think some flexibility on that would be warranted, sure.
That's why I said, unless requested by commissioner. Just add that. Other than that, I, I make a motion, we approve it.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Mr. Crutchfield, any other questions? Comments here and all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Um, that concludes all of the items on the agenda. Anyone in the audience wishing to, uh, address the board on any item that's not, uh, on the agenda? We give you three minutes. Seeing no, uh, hands going up. Ms. Daniels, anything else?
I do have just a couple of things. One, I wanted to acknowledge Chris Rito. I did not realize he was in the audience on the ARPC item. Chris, did you wanna um, make any comments?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chris.
Chris Rito, I'm the executive director of the Athlachia Regional Plant Council. Commissioner Peacock serves as our vice chair, and I came here this morning just to be, um, available if there were any questions about the HHRP or, I'm sorry, the ship contract that you all renewed. Um, we're, we're certainly here to provide assistance to all the counties in our region. We have the opportunity to help you all with the ship program. I know there were some concerns earlier about, we've had some turnover with staff, but I did, uh, want to announce that we were able to hire an additional coordinator yesterday. Uh, and she will start June seventeen. So we're back to full staff and we really look forward to helping the county with the ship program as well as HHRP. Very happy to be able to serve the nation.
Well, we certainly appreciate you, uh, coming and, uh, uh, speaking to us. I know that there's certainly an opportunity for Jackson County and ARPC to work together on a number of different issues and not, not just, uh, specifically the ship program, but a number of the things that you can help us with, and we certainly appreciate that. Appreciate you coming, uh, today. And any, any questions, Mr. Peacock?
Not a question, I would just like to comment that Chris does an outstanding job as the director of ARPC. And they got a lot of programs that will, that helped a lot of people. Uh, I didn't realize the extent of what they do until I got involved in it. So, uh, Chris, you do, you and your people do an outstanding job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to come at a future date and, and give you all an overview of what we do, just to bring everyone up to speed, if that's a pleasure.
I think, you know, quarterly, uh, you know, to, to come and just kind of update us, uh, and give us, uh, kind of an update on everything that's going on will be, uh, very well warranted and, uh, appreciated as well.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I do have a couple more things. Um, we have a white board clarification on the record for the use of staff's personal holiday. Um, so currently, we have a policy that, um, just as a reminder, each employee gets one personal holiday when they're hired with the board. And so, um, currently, the policy does not say like how long they have to work, or if they have to work a certain length of time to get the personal holiday. Um, so I would like the board to adopt an official policy that, um, so right now, an employee has to work sixty days before they can first use their vacation time. And I would like the personal holiday to reflect that as well. So after sixty days, no matter when you're hired, October one, before, after, anytime. After sixty days, you can use your personal holiday.
Like that motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to, uh, basically address our personnel policy to put into play sixty-day employment before they can take advantage of the personal holiday.
Right, no matter when they're hired.
No matter when they're. Got a cut motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Hearing none of all this in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Pe- McKinney voting a little bit low.
Sorry.
And then lastly, um, Rhett has a request. I'll let you explain.
So we're gonna have a, um, temporary void in our animal control department, um, after today, we won't have a permanent position. Um, so we're asking the board to designate the code enforcement officer to act as a temporary animal control officer. In the event that citations are needed to be written, we have an official person that can execute those needs on a day-to-day basis.
So is Edmund leaving?
Um, he's going out for an extended time.
Okay. And, uh, would assume that Jessica or, or that person is qualified to, to do that?
Yeah, so I, I double-checked state statute and it said really anyone can do it as long as designated by the board. So I just felt that since code enforcement is along the same realm, she's, you know, very well up to it.
So what are you telling us? Edmund's gone?
Just temporarily.
Yeah.
Could just be out for probably eight weeks, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we not hire a second one?
So we've been advertising, we've held interviews, didn't have anyone, um, I've got another round of applications, I started making calls just yesterday. So in the meantime, we do intend to fill that position, uh, for a full-time animal control officer. But till that's done, we just wanna have someone designated.
How are you gonna take care of the problem in the interim? Is Jessica gonna go catch a dog?
Nope, no, um, the request from the code enforcement is strictly gonna be for, uh, writing citations and, you know, it's very specific, like a bike report and things that are um, that have to be done according to state regulations. As far as the day-to-day stuff, we're just gonna do it in the best we can. I mean, it, it's gonna be a time where y'all's phones, my phones, they're gonna ring off the hook, but just know we're doing the best we can.
Well, I just know that, uh, you know, animal control is, uh, you know, something that, uh, has to be dealt with on a daily basis. I'm sure Edmund, you know, goes dealing with calls daily.
Oh, yeah.
M- multiple calls daily.
So we do, anyone, we do, we do have a part-timer that comes in in the afternoons and works. Um, so right now, all the calls are funneled through the public works office. Um, Heather, myself, or whoever, Brian, whoever's in there gets the information. It makes it on hold for, until that person, the part-timer gets here, comes in at one, works one to five, Monday through Friday. Um, so we do have a physical person designated to it in the afternoons, um, but it's, it's more than one person can do in the afternoon. So when it gets really bad, we've got one guy that has volunteered from the parks department, um, to fill in when needed. He's also on the on-call schedule, they rotate every week. Um, and then once we get this vacancy filled for a full-time position, that'll roll into both the day-to-day and the on-call rotation.
Rhett, uh, have you reached out to partners for pets and see if they have any extra staff or volunteers that didn't make the job on the study?
I, I haven't, but I know they're, they're struggling with what they have now. All right, we, that's one thing a lot of people don't, um, realize the volume of what we do. Um, for instance, City of Mariana just executed a contract, um, out of county with a shelter for up to a hundred animals per year. Um, we can do that in a couple of weeks. I mean, we're, we really just have too much that we take in and volunteers. Um, I mean, they're wrapped up at the partnership pet shelter. We, we can't have them, you know, driving county trucks, going on private property, it's just, it's not feasible.
I make a motion, we approve his request to allow the code enforcement to fill in.
Got a motion from Mr. Peacock, second from Mr. Branch, any other questions? Comments here and all this in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Anything else?
Sure, anything from council?
No.
Okay, uh, I saw Wes Birch out there, I don't see him now, but, uh, with that being said, anything from Mr. Peacock?
Of course. Rhett, we could, looks like we got a good crop of hydrilla growing.
Yes, sir.
In the mill pond?
Yes, sir.
Has he sprayed that?
No, it's scheduled for next week.
Next week?
Yes.
Okay. Um, last meeting we had, you mentioned something about the American Legion and the buildings and everything. I went out and looked and there are a couple of old log cabins out there. Are y'all aware of that? Rhett probably is.
Really?
I wonder if TDC could possibly, uh, repurpose those things.
Are those part of the, I don't think those are part of the buildings that we're talking about.
I know they're not part, but they're on our properties.
Oh.
And, uh, I was looking at them, I was like, wow, TDC might be able to repurpose them. Now, she may have to get, we may have to get Charlie to pick them up and move them. But, uh.
Where would you move them to?
Over here with the museum. I, I, I.
Are they our, are, th- those are our buildings for sure? I would say they are.
Well, they're in defense.
Yeah.
I thought the American, I thought that was part of American Legion, baby.
I, I, I know.
I don't think it is. We, we.
It's worth looking at.
Just for, for, since you brought it up, Willan, you wanna bring about the speed on our meeting, uh, Rhett and I and Willan met with the American Legion last week.
Um, yeah, I mean, pretty well, they, they are very interested in having, um, the assets as well as the funding donated to them. Um, I missed the first part of the meeting, you actually might could do a better job explaining than me.
Well, it, I think I had mentioned it, that I had received a, a call and a letter from John Roberts who was approached by, I'm gonna say the Ag Expo, the Jackson County Ag Expo. And because of the inactivity of, of this particular organization um, in putting together a county fair, which has not been one, if I recall correctly, since two thousand and nine is what they said. Uh, the state of Florida has moved to pull their charter. And as a result of pulling the Jackson County Ag Expo's charter, those, the, the, um, the, the financial assets and the property assets would automatically go to the city of Mariana and to the county jointly. And the American Legion is basically saying, well, that's not even actually true. Uh, that they, they have interest in that property and that they jointly own one of the two buildings. City of Mariana previously take it, took action because we were at the meeting where they basically, uh, said that we don't want, you know, we don't want the building. Uh, we don't want the assets and basically gave up their rights to, uh, the, the, the Ag Expo's assets. And they're asking the county to do the same. And the American Legion, uh, very pointedly said that they, they want those assets and they wanna continue to use them. And at the end of our meeting, I, I felt like, uh, I know that I would be in favor of us doing the same thing as the city of Mariana. But I don't think it's includes, it only includes that one building. And then there's some add-ons behind that building.
Six buildings back there.
Right. Our property, the county's property goes right to the front door, and that's where the American Legion actually, I, I think it's post fifty-two thirteen, whatever it is, uh, meets Smith Kelly. And, uh, they use it and they plan on doing some things out there and, uh, that, they are very much interested in, in maintaining, uh, in having that property.
And they regard that to come, was it the eighteenth, till we were gonna put that on?
Yes.
I think July.
They were going to come next week to, you know, make their requests to the board. Um, so it'll be on next week's agenda.
Don't, don't we need to find out that we're exactly the property?
I, I think that was one of the things that we, I think they've got a survey and I think they'll be prepared to be able to tell us that.
We can put some of that information in the packet.
Well, I would definitely want to see something.
Your, your question is about the log cabins that are on there and whether the TDC could potentially re.
Yeah, it's, it's a county asset, it looks to me like it's, it's, it's deteriorated.
That's all part of the, the Ag Expo slash Smith Kelly post.
Is it?
All that's still under theirs.
Really?
Yeah, so the way I explained it to me essentially was the, the Ag Expo had a state charter under FDAX. But since it's been inactive, the FDAX is holding a charter, so all the assets are referred back to the Smith Kelly post. The Ag Expo was originally founded by members of Smith Kelly as a subsidiary. So Smith Kelly, Post, VFW, or American Legion, sorry, um, really owns everything. So now they're just taking away this, the, uh, Ag Expo portion and putting it back under the main umbrella of Smith Kelly post. So it's all theirs, anyway.
So do we need to take any action? I mean, I, I don't.
Just to say we don't want.
We don't have any interest in it. And, and the, the property that you're talking to does include the log cabins?
Yes. It's three different parcels uh, in a row, but it's got the, um, the front building, which is the Smith Kelly, and then the next two, which is the Quonset hut that's attached to the main building, and then the barn and the all the other outbuildings, they're the, the pair property ownership.
Well, when they come, if Smith Kelly, and I don't know whether they do or didn't, because they didn't specifically talk to us when we were there about log cabins, they don't have any use for it, maybe they would be willing to donate it to the county.
When you look at it, it appears to be part of our property.
I thought you can get that clarified, yeah. Prior to that.
But anyway, um, another thing. Jeffrey and I talked this morning about, uh, Sweet Pond Road. I've had like three calls in a week about, uh, how rough that road is, and people want them a sign put up named Rough Road. I talked to Fred and he went on, uh, Google and indicated that it was a rough road, but I, I still don't, we need to put a sign up at the Love Dale Road. Maybe turn, it'll deter a lot of those tourists from coming down it. You see RVs, big boats, Mercedes, Lexus, BMWs, they go a little way and they turn around and go back. So if we could create a, like a Rough Road ahead or something sign that stick up there and might get their attention. And I don't think, uh, let me, it don't solve the problem. At least they'll know before they go down it, and they grade that thing, it's just, it's more out.
So you, your, uh, ask or request is to put a Rough Road sign and maybe deter some of that traffic, so do that.
Yep.
Go a different route?
Yep. Maybe, and one other thing, did the letter to the sheriff go out?
It did.
Okay. Have you had a response?
Have not.
Okay.
Don't expect that.
Okay.
But you never know. Is that it?
That's all I got.
Mr. Branch?
Oh, anything?
Okay. Mr. McKinney down, you're in it. Mr. Crutchfield?
Yeah, one question on the milling, Paul, and I know it's gonna take a lot of trucks. Have y'all given some thought on, uh, if we need some, we got, still gotta maintain a road. What we're gonna do, if we need a load of dirt and pull one away or something if I have to, or?
Yeah, so this is gonna be a all-hands-on-deck project, which we do have, um, both our two new bottom dump, uh, trailers that go behind a semi, which haul more, could have more capacity as well as two large dump trucks. So those are gonna be the primary, and it's all gonna depend on the hauling distance, which is why, um, Jeffrey picked kind of a more central location, so it don't have to drive so far. We can keep a shorter or a less personnel on just the milling project, but we're not anticipating any major delay in day-to-day operation.
Did you ask Gene how many trucks it's gonna take to keep up with them?
I mean, we'd probably be doing about fifty loads a day, just based on the weather. I must say enough that somewhere probably be fifty to seventy-five loads a day. And that would take about fifteen, fifteen hours. We thought about how many trucks it might take, and if we need to throw one in there to keep everything open, if we could do that. But it, but it, I would anticipate, did have at least fifteen trucks and that. But you're only talking about if we start at seven in the morning, by noon or one, you're done. That, that's finished. Okay.
All of that's gonna be done during the day, then?
Yeah, you, yes. I think that's one of these two, these two jobs, I'm, I'm, I can't, I can't, it could have been, but it was all night work, so there was no opportunity for that. That's why it's all piled in front of the plane, in front of, in front of the back. We got places to put it. But I mean, uh, we feel like it's gonna be a benefit to us, county citizens, that want to start roads to, uh, help fix that problem, so. But I, but most days, you would be through with the billing by probably two o'clock, slated, probably earlier than that.
Once, uh, once the milling's going, how, how long does it usually take to fill a truck? About five minutes?
Yes, it's about five.
Okay. Clay?
Um, I got, uh, one thing to let everybody know, we sent out a, or I sent out a letter notifying all the municipalities, uh, concerning the gas taxes. Like when it starts, what their projected amount per the, uh, consultant, what their projected amount would be. Um, told them there'd be a lapse in the start date until they actually started receiving the money. Uh, and to make sure that they follow the guidelines, you know, for that money wouldn't be useful. Yeah.
So could we get a copy of that?
Uh, yeah, I can send you a copy.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So each one.
Yeah, for, for each one of the municipalities, you just want the standard letter? How, how do you want, you want for all of them? I mean, I can do it.
I would not have one for the municipalities.
Okay.
It's just three one of them.
When does it actually start from?
It's gonna start October the first.
Okay. Probably be late January.
I'm guessing, uh, December or January before they actually get a check. Because it'll, it'll take a month, you know, from the collective, a month to send it to DOR, a month for DOR to send it out.
And it goes straight from DOR to the municipalities? It's not come to, does it come to the, can you first?
It comes to us first, right? And then we mail it out to them. So, I mean, it'll be. It comes to us first, right? And then we mail it out to them. So I mean, it'll be, they gotta collect it. So they'll send DOR, DOR send it to us. So you're probably looking at January.
Will this be a separate check than the gasoline tax they're already getting?
Yes.
They will know that that's what it is.
And this will be a quarterly check or monthly or?
It'll be monthly, once it starts coming in.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just um add, it just feels like a good time for Clay to also um brief the board on some good news with some interest um payments that we're gonna receive that we were not anticipating.
Well, last year, um, we, we, it, you know, the, the Lord looks out for the dumb and the foolish most of the time, right? So in uh twenty twenty-two, uh, we were approached uh by a bank uh soliciting our business and they made us an outstanding offer for interest. Uh, well, at that time, interest was low, you know, and uh um during the full year ending in twenty twenty-three was the benefit of that. And I think we earned uh approximately one point two million dollars more than we did the previous year. Now, that's not gonna be that much this year. Uh, it was a one-year deal. They wanted our business and they, and they've been very good uh partners with us uh to do that. So uh we have that extra money um that uh know how much of it that we used in the budget. Not very much of it. So that's, that's money that, that we hadn't budgeted before that we have to fill the gaps on some of these things that we are doing. And uh we got it during the month of September of twenty twenty-three and a little bit in October uh to finish it up. So.
Good, good news.
Did we ever hear?
Oh?
I'm sorry. Did we ever hear from, if the governor signed the the preparation for us?
I haven't heard anything before on that. We're, we're, the clerk's offices are kind of waiting on some of that too.
I'm gonna say real quickly, you want to kind of preface for the upcoming budget process as far as what we expect as far as we want to start meeting?
Yes, so that'll be on the next agenda there. So y'all will be setting your dates at the next agenda, but um typically we start at the end of July, like the last week of July. Um, so that's what you can sort of be anticipating. We'll have that all outlined though with all of your public hearing dates and all of that at the next meeting.
Good. All right. With that being said, since there's no more business of the Jackson County Board of County Comis-